Good afternoon, everyone. It's now 2:03 and this subcommittee meeting, the Economic Development Committee, is gonna kick off. We have several people here at City Hall and we have several people on Zoom. So, those in attendance here in City Hall, why don't we go around the horn and introduce, we have from the school committee, Josiah?
Yeah, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Josiah Gonzalez. I'm here representing Home City Development, not in my head in the school committee, but I appreciate that. Councillor Kern as the COO at Home City Development. Great to be here with them.
Introduce yourself, sir. You don't have to.
No, I'm Jeffrey Oldvixen with Clinical and Support Options, VP of Marketing and Development there.
Welcome.
I'm Anna McEvitchess. I'm the Regional Housing Compliance and Development Director at CSO as well.
Welcome. Your city solicitor, Steve Bonicani, as well as Assistant Solicitor Ken Jay.
Jerry McCafferty, Springfield Director of Housing.
Olivia Bernstein. I'm the Vice President of Supportive Housing at the Mental Health Association, MHA.
My name is Kendrick Thornton. I'm a project manager with Home City Development.
Joined by Jeanette Tiford, the Republican, as well. On Zoom, we have Councillors Zeta and Govan. We have-
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Zeta. Councillor Victor Navilla.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair.
And you gotta help me out in code enforcement. I can't see the-
Mark Keever, Deputy Building Commissioner.
Steve, Code Enforcement Commissioner.
Thank you for taking time out of your day, gentlemen. We appreciate it. We also have the President of Home City. Introduce yourself, sir. Introduce yourself to the-
Tom Kegelman, Executive Director of Home City Development.
Thanks, everyone, for attending and particularly, I want to thank the Law Department for putting some time into this. I introduced this legislation about a year ago and it was really just some basic ideas. But Ken Jay has put a lot of work into it. Steve Bonicani has reviewed it and I know Tom Warren, the Law Department, has put a lot of work into this draft, which I think is pretty good in regards to getting some standards. The genesis of the idea of a minimum size requirement here in the city of Springfield happened as a city councillor during Zoom. We had some developers who came before the city council and they represented their development as, basically, it was three buildings. It was about 10 units in each building as 10 one-bedroom apartments. But it turned out that the size of the square footage of these apartments were about 375 square feet. And as a member of the city council, you know, you have such a varied array of experiences. Not everyone is an expert in zoning law. Not everyone's an expert in construction. And so, when you are at the mercy of a developer representing to your fellow councillors that they're gonna apply for a permit to construct one-bedroom apartments, I think to many, you believe that it's gonna be a sizable one-bedroom apartment with a sizable kitchen, a sizable living room, sizable bedroom and a bathroom. But it was kind of surprising to learn that 375 square foot would be considered one-bedroom apartments. This developer did get the permit approved and I thought that it would be in good interest of the city that we had some standards. Number one, for the councillors, so that we have common definitions of what a one-bedroom, a two-bedroom, a three-bedroom and a four-bedroom is and that we're not at the mercy of developers simply saying they're gonna build these types of apartments. So, I looked up and did some research. And the state of Massachusetts has come up with design requirements and they were developed by Mass Housing through the Department of Housing and Community Development. And they developed target unit sizes. And the target unit sizes for a studio apartment is 500 square feet. A one-bedroom is 600 square feet. A two-bedroom, 750 square feet. A three-bedroom, 1,000 square feet. And a four-bedroom, 1,100 square feet. And the Law Department was able to codify those dimensions. And the thrust of the ordinance is that the city of Springfield should have some standards. Number one, we should have the definitions, so we add transparency, so we know what we're talking about. We're talking about a studio, a one-bedroom, a two-bedroom. And we should have a standard for a minimum one-bedroom. So, a one-bedroom should kind of mirror what the state is saying, 500 square feet and not 375. And that really is the whole intention of the legislation. There is an amendment in the legislation that if a developer wanted to go and build an apartment less than 500 square feet, they could do so. But they would have to apply for a waiver to do so. So, if a developer, for whatever reason, perhaps hypothetically, a social service nonprofit organization hypothetically dealing with drug or alcohol rehabilitation wanted to build units of 375 square feet, they put in for the waiver. They go before the council. They explain why they want to go less than the minimum 500 square feet. And they could also do it. So, it's not gonna prohibit building less than 500 square feet, but you'd have to go that extra step and get the waiver. Now, why? I've been pushing this for about a year now. And part of the reason why is obviously the housing crisis that we have in the city of Springfield. And we have many stakeholders here who have been tackling that head-on. Home City and many others who have done a fantastic job through their efforts of transforming some of our schools into great habitable places, as well as the YMCA. And there's other developers in the city. Gordon Pulsifer is notable. Chuck Irving is notable for bringing into the city quality housing professionally crafted. But the housing situation in '25 is so much different than one of those years ago. I just speak from my own experience. My parents, like many, were immigrants coming to the city of Springfield. And when, you know, in 1965, you can get a 2,000-square-foot apartment for $300 a month. And now, you're getting a 300-square-foot apartment for $2,000 a month. So, it's flipped on its head. And at the time, I didn't think the city, years ago, didn't need to step in and tell developers, "Hey, you need to make quality housing." People themselves just wouldn't pay the rents at all unless it was a sizable apartment. But now, I think we have to. There's obviously cross-state, Boston, Worcester, Lawrence, Proctor, a housing crunch. And we need to at least have these developers come into the city and take advantage of the cheaper building rates and the cheaper land. Obviously, construction materials is the same across the board. And provide some standards and provide a little bit of, you know, "Okay, we understand you're looking to rent these apartments to individuals of not high income, not a lot of means, but if we're gonna do that, you have to provide habitable housing, housing that is humane, housing that is conducive to a quality of life and community within that unit." Today is a great example. It's 93 degrees. And if you had a 375-square-foot apartment and, you know, as someone who was a landlord myself, you know, you have your tenants, but sometimes family members come over and it's just too- Some of these units are very, very small. And that is kind of the thrust behind what I put together on paper. So, we're here to discuss the merits of it and I've taken up a lot of the time already. So, I'd like to start perhaps around the horn with, I guess we have- How about perhaps our Director of Housing, Jerry McCafferty?
I'd be happy to jump in. So, certainly, I appreciate the concern about standardizing what we say so that when somebody says they're building something, you know what they're saying. I do have a concern about the fact that this ordinance prohibits development of units under square, 500 square foot unless there is a waiver, a waiver that is discretionary. So, it adds both an element of uncertainty as to whether the development can go forward and it adds another step. So, we're currently in a housing crisis, as you said. And some of that is about the fact that we have more households in the city than we have housing units. Populations' projections show that this is gonna worsen. So, even though we don't have a lot of population growth, we have household growth. And the reason we have that is because, and this is not just in Springfield, across the country, household sizes are getting smaller. So, there are more and more people living in one-person and two-person households. So, some of the demand is really for small units. And as I said, it means that we need more units to serve the same population size we have right now. So, meanwhile, the cost of developing housing is skyrocketing. So, there's lots of reasons that have contributed to this. Some of this is increased cost of building materials, which really increased significantly post-pandemic and is likely to increase more and become more of a problem with tariffs. We also have labor shortages that drive up the cost of labor to build houses. So, as we have lack of sufficient housing, that's what drives up rents. We have more people competing for fewer units. So, one of the things we're- So, we know that local residents are increasingly stressed by unaffordable rents and a lack of housing units. So, one of the things in this environment that I think we should be doing is trying to ease the development of new housing. So, I don't think now is the time to add additional restrictions on housing developments. As I said, this includes variance requirements. Time is money. And we're adding regulatory cost to the cost of development, which is already sky-high and makes it really hard for developers to make housing affordable. I mean, they have to get their money back. So, you know, if they- What happens is if they can't afford to build it, it just doesn't get built. And so, you know, I think we need to be thinking about how do we get the housing built. So, if I could just keep going, I have a little bit more to say. Among the strategies being used across the country to bring down the cost of development is microunits, which is what these are called. They're being developed in many areas of the country. Small units respond to the needs of several populations. First, I want to point out young professionals getting their first apartment. I have firsthand experience with this because my 25-year-old son graduated from college last year. He's an engineer. He's in his first apartment, which is about 400 square feet. He loved the thought that he didn't have to buy a lot of furniture and he could afford it. He could afford to live by himself, which he couldn't have done in a bigger unit. Individuals who live alone and are trying to control costs are another population. And this includes elderly people on a fixed income. And one of the things I do want to say is many of these places with microunits do building community space. So, while you're probably not entertaining people in a unit that's 375 square feet, there is probably a community room where you can be with anyone visiting you. The last one, and the one that has brought these folks here, is special needs populations, including people exiting homelessness. So, these folks are representing two developments that are under construction that are currently producing microunits for folks coming out of homelessness. Home City Development is doing 275 Chestnut Street. Friends of the Homeless, CSO, is producing units at 775 Worthington Street. They're both permanent supportive housing units, so they're both affordable and they have intensive supportive services onsite to support their residents. These developments are ideally suited to the needs of people exiting homelessness. And they're a really important part of our city's strategy to address homelessness. We don't have enough shelter right now. Instead of building shelter, we are building small housing units to help people get off the street. If we don't have housing like this, we have more unsheltered people on the street. The first of these two projects at Chestnut Street is opening next month. And we're currently working to identify the people to live in these units. Most are currently unsheltered on the streets, in our parks. And we're prioritizing people with mental health needs. So, while the housing will clearly be good for those folks, it's also a tremendous community benefit to be taking those people off the streets. And I think that's something we can all support. And I grant you mentioned those as a helpful housing type. I think the other- So, I think I want to end by just saying, I really urge us not- I urge the council not to add additional regulations that drive up the cost of housing. I'll note that multifamily housing already requires a special permit from city council, so these developments are coming to city council anyway. And this variance will add another element. And again, it's a, as I understand it, it's a subjective standard and it's discretionary. So, it could stop any project at any time for any kinds of reasons that may not- Any kinds of reasons, including, you know, well, actually. So, as I say, they're in front of the city council for a special permit anyway. So, these are being reviewed by council. Council is getting their say in them. And I just would urge you not to add another barrier to getting affordable housing and supportive housing developed.
Well, I thank you for that viewpoint. And these subcommittee meetings are trying to get the best public policy for the residents of Springfield. And just, I'm not engaging in a debate on it, but just to get a little bit further perspective on a couple of things. So, the bill is gonna implement standards. And that's really from the city council perspective as councillors. Of what a studio, a one-bedroom and a two-bedroom are. And these standards are based on Department of Housing Guidelines. So, Department of Housing Community Development Guidelines issued in 2018. On that part, I know you're against the waiver. Is there room for that, to have standards? So, when a private developer, obviously, the Department of-
I don't see a problem with saying how many feet equals what-
What a one-bedroom. And this is the issue for-
And I understand you don't want to hear people misrepresenting. And that makes sense. City council should know what they're actually approving.
It's a major issue when people, and not just pertaining to housing, all kinds of things that are represented before the council. We just had a, we, I was inclined to do it before, but we had a developer. We agreed that a $8 million tax credit. And the developer represented, if we didn't give the tax credit, the project stops. But at the same testimony, the developer explained that his company has a billion dollars of property throughout the country. And we're like, "Well, why not take a loan off the other property?" So, when people come before the council, not real estate developer or anything, and some select boards across the Commonwealth, they ask the witnesses to take an oath. "We don't want to go, I don't want to go down that road," you know. But we're, we demand, you know, we should demand, and the residents demand, that the people who take the podium and the microphone are telling the council the truth. The problem that we have as councillors, I believe, is you are engaged, obviously, and you do a great job. You're an expert in it, in development of adaptive reuse buildings, like Mr. Pulsifer, the schools that Home City has done. You do a great job. Where the gap is, I would respectfully suggest, is when private developers come to the city. We had a private developer just three months ago, Maple Street Development, across from McDuffie School, which should be a priority of the city, that we're gonna do with the old McDuffie School. It's a great campus. And this developer was represented by a Realtor. And the Realtor did a very professional job, but had nothing to do with the city. He wasn't asking for tax credits. He's looking to build housing. And there was nobody from the city to explain to the city council what exactly he was doing. He said, "We're gonna do this many one-bedrooms." Well, some of the one-bedrooms fit the standard 500 square feet asked for by the state. Some of them did not. So, the council is at a deficit and we're at the mercy of a developer. And I, this particular developer, it's great to see a new- We have a new face in the developer pool. This gentleman has come from Worcester, the town of Shrewsbury. And he was represented again by his Realtor, who knew her facts and figures. But I think the council needs a little bit more guidance than that. And that's why we need- If there's no one from the city, because there's not tax credits involved and it's not your department, coming before us, you know, we're at the mercy of what the developer said. And if you follow the progression of many suburban towns who don't have an administrator or run by select boards, in the 1990s, the character of many towns in zoning was kind of dictated by the developers. So, at least on the standards, are you, again, do you think that would harm?
I have no objection to that. And I think, you know, the council knowing what they're dealing with is fine.
Your objection is the waiver.
The concern is the waiver and the implication that units that are 500 square foot or smaller are bad. And I think that what we're seeing around the country is private developers are starting to develop those units. And they're often a good model for young professionals. And so, I think that while the folks here are representing some permanent supportive housing, because that's what's being built right now, I think that the city should not be otherwise trying to block out small development or to block out development of small units, because I do think there's a place for them. And I think by virtue of adding another step in front of council, it adds cost.
If I could, and we're not, we're still going around and asking for tax on it. There has been no statement that units less than 500 are bad. That's not, no one's made sense.
Certainly an implication. If we need a variance for that and not for anything else.
What is the reason? Yes, we're looking for a reason. Yes, because units below the state standards guidelines would be, the implication is they're not large enough for habitation, you know, for not- Habitation would be a incorrect word. Large enough for standardized housing within the state guidelines, you know.
There is nothing in state guidelines that, there's nothing in certainly the housing code that makes it-
All I'm saying is, there is no statement that any housing less than 500 is bad. There's no, that's not being, that's not stated.
But I think what this ordinance does is make it more difficult to develop those units. It adds another step. And so, where it does something is if you're already, if they're already in front of the city council, do we need to add another?
What is bad, what is bad is developer representing 375-square-foot apartment as a one. That is what is bad. And that's the whole point. And do we need to add another layer? Yes, because we don't have the regulation right now in the city. And thirdly, developers are taking advantage of that. They know that they can come in here before the city council and say, "A one-bedroom at 375 square feet is acceptable." And then we vote on it. So, yes, developers representing 375-square-foot apartments as one-bedrooms is bad. But 375-square-foot living units is not. And now, we have our second department head from Code Enforcement. If you could, again, introduce yourself. I know you're-
I'm sorry, councillor, but councillor Govan and I have our hand up for questions for Jerry. Before you move to Code Enforcement, we would like to ask our questions and make our comments impossible.
You know what? We are gonna go to Code Enforcement first, Councillor Whitfield, just because I want to get just a little baseline of why do we have these standards first? And then we'll get questions. The testimony, we're lucky to have an individual in Code Enforcement that really is an expert.
We're not lucky. This is their job and this is our job. But thank you. I'll wait.
Thank you. You're welcome. Code Enforcement, Mr. Destel? Are you on mute or do I-
There we go. Yeah, it was on mute. Trying to get it off.
We can hear you.
Okay. What was the question?
Well, can you give us a little just background on what the state code is on? What's the minimum habitability? Like, what's the minimum that somebody can build in the city or the state?
Well, basically, if you're looking at the minimum size for apartment, if we're looking at in the IBC, at the 780 CMR, the minimum area for, let's say, a microunit is gonna be 190 square feet. That's the actual open living area minus the, you know, a bathroom and a kitchen. So, after that, depending on the occupancy, you're gonna go up 100 square feet per person depending on if you're using a sanitary code or the building code. Listening to what Jerry McCafferty says, I'm inclined to say the same thing. Looking at the fact of what this can do to developers far as added construction, added construction time and the uncertainty, I hear this a lot all the time. "What can we do for expedited permitting?" Well, this is going in the opposite direction if we look at the city for expedited permitting. And I look at some of our recent ordinances that have passed or even some that are trying to come up that are gonna even add more layers, like, you know, like the tree ordinance and years ago, we put the demo delay ordinances. I mean, just those three things alone can cause quite a bit long delay. And putting in the fact of you're looking at a development coming forward. A lot of these ordinances can be used against a developer to either stop the development or delays, cause such delay to the ordinance that the developers will just move away from the projects. And listening, one of the things Jerry mentioned is something I, my, actually, I had the same scenario when my youngest son graduated from college. He had a hard time finding a small enough unit that he could afford for him and his fiancee at the time, because they both got out of school. They were both looking for something that was reasonably small enough and affordable enough to get on their feet till they could get their careers going. So, I look at it as a, from a point of a developer and building commissioner and once a landlord myself. You look at the market forces. Somebody's coming into the city that's gonna be looking to develop it. They've got their finger most likely on the market. What's in demand? What's out there that's marketable for apartments? And going too small and there's no demand for it, you're not gonna be able to move. Go too big and you're not gonna move them. I'll give you, for instance, right now, we have a developer off of Maple Street in Springfield, one of the side streets over there that has one of the large apartment buildings over there that has. I think there are four-bedroom units and some are quite a bit larger. They're looking at reducing these because of their market. They don't have a market for the big, huge four-bedroom units. They're looking at reducing them down to one-bedroom and two-bedroom units that'll be into the market that he's renting at. So, I just look at it as just another layer that developers and builders are gonna have to go through to try to even get, before they even get to a building permit process.
That would be accurate. Yeah, there would be, there would be that other layer if you're gonna build less than 500 square feet. It wouldn't prohibit it, but there would be the other. So, you are accurate. There is another layer.
Well, I can prohibit it, because I mean, if you look at, and I'm just playing devil's advocate, because if you have a group that we've seen recently that is fighting development and all of a sudden, you bring in an ordinance forward. If you get a loud group in the state that doesn't want that development, in some cases, some people don't want no development around them, you know, not in my backyard. They can use these ordinance to slow down or even stop development in a way. If that's what the developer has and that's the way his financing and his business model is based on units that may be smaller than that, and if he has to go to council on top of maybe demo delay that puts him on nine months, the tree ordinance on top of it, then you put this on top of it. It's like almost putting up a sign in Springfield. Springfield's calls for business. I get a lot of pressure all the time about, you know, what can the building department do about expedited permitting? And I look at stuff like this. This is the kind of things that, before they even get to our expedited permitting process, we've got all these different hurdles that can cause, you know, a year, two years worth of delay in some cases.
Understood. Let me ask you this, Commissioner, Mr. Destel. In the city of Boston, they have a minimum. Their minimum's 450. And how do you think, I mean, are you familiar with that? And how does that play out in regards to development? I mean, has it been prohibited in Boston?
I mean, I really haven't. I mean, one thing I would recommend, and I'm just playing devil's advocate on most of the stuff. So, one thing I'd recommend, because I talked to some of the developers about this, just from my knowledge of it, and they haven't been approached yet. So, you look at developers in a city like First Investors, Gordon Pulsifer, maybe Tom Barretta. I mean, these guys have multi-billion dollar projects that they're looking at. Let's say, a good example, Tom Bros got quite a few projects that he's got planned on. And this is a huge factor that can come into play for them. What they're looking at, because you're actually looking at condominiums too that can have the effect. So, looking at the cost effect of maybe cutting down how many units they can put per acre of land because of a size square footage, how much is gonna increase the cost is gonna be a factor in your project, whether or not- gonna be a factor in your project, whether or not they they go forward or 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 maybe cancel the project. Uh, far as Boston, Boston, I I I see it a lot back, back and forth to Boston when it comes to development. We see what happens in the building codes a lot of time, especially when it comes to like the handicap accessibility. Uh, spring, adding sprinkler systems into projects, especially retrofitting buildings, something that's easily absorbed into a Boston market, tends to be project killers out here in Western Mass because of their cost versus the investment, the the turnaround on your investment and the overall cost of a project. Because in Western Mass with the, you know, how we look at, far as the overall uh, investment at the projects and and returns. So I mean, I've had projects quite a few times over the years where people walked away because you know, the extra cost with handicap accessibility or sprinkler system versus something if it was down in Boston, it would have been a blink of an eye.
I, i- if I could ask you, uh, uh, Commissioner, so I think you articulated your, your stance on the waiver. How about the idea of the standards that we have some standard language and we're speaking of one, two and three bedrooms uh, based on apartment and housing and recommendations?
I mean, I don't, I don't think I have an opinion either way on that far as the the standards decided. I don't think I've ever seen a that big of an issue really come down to the, the market of who's looking for something that's again, there may be a market out there where people are looking for it for a square foot apartment, and then you have people in the market looking for a three bedroom or four bedroom apartment that, you know, any given time, as Jerry mentioned, the fact that we see such problems with our housing market out here because of the demand. And as Mark will tell you, and on my code enforcement side, we just consistently, week after week, are finding bootleg housing all over the city in basements and apartments and stuff. And generally, uh, in in basements and attics, and that's all because of the the demand for the the lack of housing in the city. And a lot of these the people are just stuffed into basements, little no second means of egress, no smoke detection, just a bed and and, you know, maybe like a little micro kitchen setup in there and all the wiring, plumbing, everything's bootleg. Uh, so there is a crisis that's, you can really put your thumb on it and and it shows up in different ways with the lack of housing.
But on that point, Commissioner, all right, so if if you do have to seek a waiver to get an apartment for less than five hundred square feet, wouldn't that necessitate your department going out and making sure that 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 the apartments were not bootleg apartments and they were actually up to code, so to speak?
Well, I mean, no matter what, if somebody comes in, if they're gonna build micro units under even under like the, the building code, there's a good commentary on it, on why the micro units and how they allow them to go so small. As long as it meets the building code, we're good. I mean, I kind of, my personal opinion really is not gonna matter without that. Does somebody does developer meet the minimum standard set by the building code for plumbing, electrical, uh, means of egress, health and safety. So uh, the building code has looked at that and looked at micro units and and they do talk about in the commentaries exactly why and looking at what the the most common areas as minimum stands for common areas need to be for a micro unit. Uh. So I, it's, it's, it's just a peripheral problems that 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 come with this. Again, like I say, I I I look at it as just another threshold that a developer is gonna have to go through that may meet a political wall that were just ordinance could be used against them. But kill development or slow it down to the point where it does kill development.
No, it's definitely another layer of the onion. There's no, yes, you are correct there. Uh. I don't know if anyone else in your office, I see a gentleman if wanted to comment or not, if not, uh.
Uh, Deputy Commissioner, if you want to comment.
Yeah. No, like she said, the big thing is the building code has a minimum standard, you know, and then there's two hundred square foot per person excluding two hundred square foot of habitable space. So that excludes kitchens, bathrooms, closets, things like that. So I don't know how you're determining square footage or how it's presented, but it's habitable living space. And then you put your occupants based on now. So whatever gets presented to us for a permit and it's, you know, they wanna build a room or a house or an addition or whatever it is, we base it on a square foot. It's a minimum standard. If they don't meet that, we have to reject it.
Uh, now we have several councillors on the line and we have uh Tracy Whitfield, councillor, uh Tracy Whitfield at at large. You have your hand up, Tracy.
Um, Zeta councillor Govan had her hand up first, so I just wanna respect the order.
Okay, I didn't catch you had it up first or last.
I know, you can't see us like that.
Thank you, um, Madam Vice President. Um, so I'm really glad that we're having this conversation. I think that maybe, um, hearing from Jerry and um the code enforcement department, um, would have been better before, um, because when I think you first brought this up, councillor Curran in uh city council, I thought, oh, that's a great idea, right? We need to make sure that people are having, you know, enough spaces to live. But then I remember a few years back when we were talking about, um, oh God, what were they called? Those little houses, tiny houses or something like that, um, because we are in a high housing crisis, you know, so I guess, um, I don't know what the answer to this is. And when we're looking at people who are trying to, you know, increase the amount of affordable housing in our city, I think is something that we have to do absolutely, and we have to do it carefully, right? Because we also don't want people living in places that they're gonna regret being there, right? Um, I know right now my friend is looking for a a one or two bedroom apartment for herself and she's established. She has you know, a good paying job. She doesn't qualify for any programs and she can't find an apartment that she can afford. So, you know, this conversation is very important and it's vital. Um, and I'm not sure. I guess I can ask Jerry if you, if I don't know if you know the answer to this Jerry or not, but do you know the amount of, um, let's say, uh, empty buildings, empty houses in the city that could be developed, right? Because that's something that I think we, we need to do. Do you know that number or not?
I I don't know the number off the top of my head. We do have uh buildings that are empty. Um, often because they need significant rehab and
Right.
I think the challenge is always the cost of rehab means that the owner won't get enough return. Uh, so no one is, no one is interested in doing that rehab.
Hmm.
So, right, I think that goes to the issue of thinking about how, what are we doing to reduce cost of development and redevelopment to make these projects work. Um.
Hmm.
It is, we are trying to think about ways to get vacant buildings rehabbed and brought back online.
Hmm. Yeah, and I I I'm afraid when you say that, you know, it doesn't give the developer enough return. It's I hope that it's not about greed, right? Um, which is what this country seems to be going towards. Um, you know, if you don't make a million dollars, then I'm not gonna do it. Um, but I remember after the tornado, we lost a good amount of affordable housing, especially over there um, on Hickory Street, I believe. Um, and only a portion of that was replaced, from my understanding. Um, and if we continue doing things like that, then we're going to continue to be in this housing crisis as the country is. You know, you've said it, Jerry. Um, so I don't know what the answer to this is. I'd like to hear from um Home City Development and and see what their thoughts are. Um, so that we can continue having these conversations. I wasn't at the meeting last week or or the week before when I think um the CPA money was being awarded and the council decided not to award money to a project that was gonna create housing, especially I think the Mental Health Association was involved in that project. Um, so I don't know where we sit. You know, when uh councillor Curran brought this up, we don't always, the council does not always agree on everything, right? Um, but this was something that I thought might be a good idea. Um, so I'm really glad that uh code enforcement and that, you know, the housing department is here to talk about what maybe the cons could be for it. Um, so I would like to hear, you know, more and um probably have more questions later on. But thank you. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you, uh, uh councillor Govan. And we had Tracy, uh councillor Whitfield.
Yeah. Thank you, uh, Mister Chair. I have so much going on in my head right now. I'm trying to figure out where to start. I guess I'm gonna start with thank you all for coming and for your um point of views. So I don't know if everyone knows, but I think quite a few people know that we are a startup property development company. I do own um part of one. And I'm gonna agree a hundred percent with Jerry and Steve Desilts, because it is difficult to do business in the city of Springfield. It took us about, if you have to go through a zone change, if you have to go through um, development delays, tree ordinance, and add another layer of variance for something that I don't really think is needed, um, it's really hard on the developer because time is money. And so we're already probably into about, if you have to go through all those steps, you're already into about a year um, before you can start developing. And that's not even including getting a survey done. I've been waiting seven months to get a survey done before I could even go to bring my plans to code enforcement and, um, I'm sorry, the building department. Before I can even get started, I haven't had a survey done. And that's because there is a shortage in people to do the surveys. So we're already like having this property that we gotta pay taxes on, that we gotta take care of the premises, that we have to, that we can't even start developing yet because of the survey, and we haven't even went through the city process yet. It is a lot. And we all, we had to go through the zone change, which was a lot and a lot of money and advertising. And it's just more layers on top of layers on top of layers. That's one point at, from a development standpoint. You said something about, um, people coming in from out of town doing all these developments. I like First Resources and Gordon Paulsifer. I like him a lot, but I like Home City Development and Wayfinders also because they actually hire people from Springfield, small development companies like ours to help us get started in the development world, because it is a generational income building source. Um, that's why we got into it. We did not get into it to lose money, but time and time and time and time is costing us to do that. We're paying so much more, already paid taxes on this piece of parcel twice. Um, and so like when we talk about the developers and like you said, put some restraints on them, like I do I understand what you were saying about the tax incentive, but when they're bringing a multi-million dollar project and we're giving a tax incentive of eight million, I don't think that's a bad thing. They need some of these taxes and just like Home City Development, Wayfinders and others, they need these tax incentives and credits to help them get through the project because they are very expensive. And really, there are already a lot of hurdles and red tapes and bureaucracy that they have to go through in the city of Springfield. And so I wanna see more of the city council like asking, um, bigger developers to mentor smaller developers like Tom Kegelman and um Josiah does at Home City Development and Wayfinders. Like, I really appreciate them because they listened to us when we had this conversation and they really acted on it. I can't say that for the other, but I can say that for them. So I just wanted to shout out to them and thank them for coming to this meeting. And then, um, as far as the square footage, absolutely not. I do not wanna put a variance. I do not want them to come to city council for that. I will not vote on this. Because I have elderly people coming to me right now that are homeless. They have nowhere to go. And they would rather be in a three hu- three hundred and fifty square foot foot apartment, one bedroom. I don't care if it's a one bedroom studio or what it is, then be on the street in the cold. I have somebody that I have been working with for probably like seven months now to get into an apartment. A senior that has a really fixed income that can't afford twelve hundred dollars a month for rent, because then there's nothing else to live on. There's, they're on social security. There's nothing else to live on. So if you can get a three hundred and fifty square foot, one bedroom apartment that costs maybe seven hundred and fifty dollars, um, a month, I'm all for that. I, I don't know. This is more red tape, is more bureaucracy, is nothing that I can support because I, I'm living this every day. I see it with the younger people. I also have a twenty-six-year-old son fresh out of college, him and his um girlfriend, you know, just trying to, just trying to survive, like trying to survive it. And then we wonder why our young people don't come back to our city, because they can't afford to come back to our city when you can go to communities that cost a lot less for the cost of living. Like, it doesn't, this extra layer doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. Um, that's just my opinion on one councillor, but it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me, being in the field, being in the industry, having a a senior looking for, having a young person looking for someplace to live, like we have a whole homelessness population that they will stay in. I don't know if they're called row houses anymore, where they have a bedroom and then share kitchen space and share because they have a roof over their head. And that's not affordable. It's not affordable to pay four hundred dollars a week to be in a room. Like, so paying seven hundred and fifty dollars a month for a three hundred and fifty square foot, one bedroom apartment sounds very good to them. Like, but they, to survive, they still have to stay in a room and share the bathroom and share the kitchen and share the living space and things like that. Like, so anything that we can do to create housing um, for our homelessness population in our community without more red tape, I'm all for that. I'm sorry, I'm all for that. I'm not, I thank you councillor Curran for um, suggesting this. I know that your intentions are to make sure that people have a good amount of space to live. But when you look at it, it's not really, really that, that small. If you think about college students staying in dorms and things like that, they do it and they live, right? And they're not really complaining about it all that much. So I don't think that this is the best, um, amendment that we could put forward um, to help our city residents. And so with that, I just wanted to put my opinion out there. And I, I just can't support it. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Tracy. Uh, Victor, I, uh, you're next on the, on the, on the agenda. Uh, just if you could, and I apologize, Victor, if you can keep it brief, we have a couple, we have quite a few people uh that wanna testify, but keep it brief. But we appreciate your comments, Victor. You're on mute, Victor.
Thank you, uh, Mister Chair. We'll try to uh keep it brief. Uh, I haven't uh fully met up, uh, I'm just learning about this process now. I did have a, a realization, Mister Chair, as this has been progressing and that is if I'm not mistaken, at the trend, the city council has been that there's many developers coming in with, I believe it's three hundred and seventy-five square feet. Um, uh, living quarters. And so I, um, I think that first, let me say that it's better to live in, you know, in a, in a three hundred square and seventy-five or three hundred and fifty square feet than being on the street. That's true. Uh, however, a, a quick question for you, Mister Chair, if I may. Uh, what's the Boston standard? If you could.
Uh, four hundred and fifty square foot minimum. You can't go above that.
And to the best of your knowledge, how is that working out for them?
Well, it was working out, uh, the reason why they, you know, I'm just hypothetically working in real estate in Boston when I was in law school down in Boston. They had a major problem uh of individuals, college students in particular, like
Right.
being in apartments of uh three hundred square feet and charging rents of fifteen hundred for three hundred square feet. And that was a major problem in the city of Boston. Basically, uh, because of the housing crisis, uh, renters were exploited. And I think that's might been, that might have been the genesis of the four hundred and fifty square foot standard. Uh, that standard is also based on the state guidelines. Now, on top of that, that that isn't complicated, but it's, we now have the A D U uh, legislation. So this is separate from that. Uh, but the four hundred square feet was basically, I my understanding, Mayor Menino says, this has to stop. We can't have these landlords who are just exploiting renters. And that, that's why uh that was put in.
Uh, there, uh, just to wrap it up, uh, I think that I have more questions, uh, but I do, we all know that here in the city of Springfield, we're running out of space. So we only have, where I look at it, got two, we got two options. We can either go up, which is gonna change what I call the soul of the city. Or we can use you, we can keep using, uh, the, we're adopting use of buildings, which seems to be one for idea. However, my fear is that if we continue this trend, as it appears that it's developing, you know very well that the prices are gonna be skyrocketing very quickly, because money is very powerful. So if I don't, if I recall correctly, even the ability of two permits we've given out so far, the rents were up near a thousand, over a thousand dollars already. So I am not fully bought in the argument that it might be cheaper. Uh, um, I don't know, I have a lot of questions, but I do have to say that, um, there's other parts, other parts in the, in the, in the world and even New York. It was, they are having problems, but people are complaining about the excessive amount of money they're paying to leave in a shoebox. Uh, but anyways, I, I look forward to the, this debate. I look forward to learning more. Uh, and at least I would say to you, Mr. Chair, that my compliments to you for attempting to bring attention to this matter. And I am, I am open to the idea uh once I learn more. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, thank you, uh, Counselor Deville. And now we're gonna go around the horn with uh some housing stakeholders and uh. Who wish, may wish to testify and if just, if you wanted to state your name for the record and stuff, provide uh your viewpoint. Sure, sure.
Uh, my name's Olivia Bernstein. I'm the Vice President of Supportive Housing at the Mental Health Association. I will be brief. I'll keep it brief. Um. So for context, MHA is a nonprofit. We're based out of Chicopee, but we primarily serve people in the Springfield area and we have, we work with over two hundred individuals. That have experienced homelessness. So based on this conversation, it's clear to me that we do share a common goal, which is we want Springfield to be a city where everyone has access to safe and stable housing. Um, we want our community to thrive. So right now, as you've already heard, MHA is partnering with the city and with Home City Development to move twenty people into newly renovated units at Chestnut Crossing. Which as many of us know was a former YMCA building that has been transformed into um supportive. Housing units with services onsite. So everybody that is going to be moving into this building has been homeless for a year or more, many times unsheltered. So yes, the apartments are compact, but they're very well designed. And they're dignified, they're private, and they are needed. I hear that this ordinance is intended to promote the quality and consistency in housing. And as we've talked about, it may make it unintentionally harder to get people off the street. And out of shelter into their own apartment. Um, this, it would be more challenging because requiring a waiver could slow down the process and could deter developers. It could prevent converting existing structures into small apartment units. And we learned in the most recent point in time count where we count all the people who are unsheltered or in sheltered. In shelter in our community that there are over two thousand seven hundred people experiencing homelessness in our region. Including nearly six hundred and forty individuals, many of whom are older adults, veterans, or people with disabilities and mental health needs. And for them, smaller apartments with onsite support isn't just appropriate, it's essential. Supportive housing like this, even with small units, has been proven to reduce pressure on ERs. And public safety systems like our local police, save taxpayer dollars, make our neighborhoods safer and healthier. And give people the dignity of having somewhere to live. We all benefit from, or we all benefit when people have a safe, stable place to live. So I ask that as you all consider this ordinance, you consider how this may unintentionally prevent developing the kind of housing that Springfield needs more of. Thanks for your time.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
I actually made, Mr. Chairman. Where, where did you get the data? Can I ask you about the data you just mentioned, twenty seven hundred?
Oh, the point in time now?
So the city of Springfield is a lead for the Hampton County Continuum of Care. Which is funded by the federal government and every continuum of care in the country does a once a year count of homeless people. We do it every January. So it's coming from me uh with community partners who have done the count.
On a very cold night in January. So the numbers are probably higher at different points in the year too.
Thank you, sir. Would you introduce yourself or testify or you don't have the best practice?
Uh, I don't, I don't have any testimony uh per se, uh, but I, my name is Kendrick Thorne. I'm with Home City Development. My colleagues are here.
All right. Welcome. Uh, Tom?
So, uh, thank you, Tom Kegelman, Executive Director of City Development. I did uh. Just put together some notes here for people. Stuff that is just, you know, available on the internet. Uh, something terribly uh.
Thank you.
Original, um, but there is a. Um, there's an interesting aspect to this in terms of uh trying to spur economic development. Um, which is part of the purpose of the committee. So I think it is important to note that um what they call. Micro apartments is an up and coming trend of, it's the second stage here. Uh, there's a, uh, you know, a, a headline saying that tiny apartments are a big deal in many US cities. And in Seattle and Boston, over half of the new units that are being built measure less than four hundred and forty one square feet. And it includes a list of Seattle where the share of micro apartments in new construction is sixty six percent. In Boston, it's fifty six percent. In Newark, it's forty nine percent. New York City is forty three percent and on through. So. To the extent that Springfield wants to be a growing part of the uh the new um. Urban environment and attract these uh up and coming uh professionals. I think we have to consider the possibility that you are going to see more and more of these micro apartments being proposed. They're very good, as Jerry was suggesting, they often include. A lot of uh shared amenities, uh, community rooms with kitchen facilities, gymnasiums, um, uh. Conference rooms, places where you can uh do printing and, and other office stuff. Um, if you've ever been to a fancy hotel with a business center, it's, it's similar to that and they charge quite a bit. And um they're very good for uh downtown of uh. Residents. And so it's something, I think, aside from the mission that we have when we share with the city and. Friends of the homeless and MHA to make um a place for all of the folks who are homeless. And give them some other alternative to living on the street. Aside from that, I think it's important for the cities to appreciate that uh it might be. Counterproductive to try to restrict uh development of these very um attractive and important uh. New uh opportunities for housing. And one other thing is. The housing crisis is about affordability. And that's what we should be focusing on, trying to figure out how to make these things more affordable. And one of the biggest um reasons that they're so expensive is the excessive permitting that's involved. The extent to which we could do as um Mr. Desalit says, um, to, you know. Make it easier for people to build these things. And I applaud him on all of his support for our work, but uh. And we, we do that when we find that and affordability has little to do with the um. So many different factors. And uh, you know, I don't think unit size is, is the place to get at it. I think uh. Whole lot of other ways to help people to um. Get more. I mean, we need to produce more. We need to make, you know, our. Our. Shared wealth in this country more equal. And I think, you know, there's other things that we could be doing. I think reducing the size of. Strictly the size of the units is not gonna get us there.
And, and just for, just for curiosity, um, how, how many units does Home City have in the city of Springfield?
Oh, you should know that. Um, well, with the twenty nine, I think we'll be up to four hundred and. Eighty.
Four hundred and eighty. And how many would be in that four hundred and fifty square foot, five hundred?
Below four fifty. Uh, it's uh, trying to think, I think the ones in just two seventy five, just.
So just the YMCA development?
So a hundred and thirty.
Now, those are the only.
Thirty units.
Hundred and thirty units.
I, I, so you're counting those as the four fifty that you already have or that, that's, those are coming online?
None online. That would be counted in the form.
Okay.
Just to clarify, they have twenty nine new units coming online, but the. Upper floors of the YMCA building have been housing that are small units. Um, so that's how they get to the.
In fact, when we acquired it, uh, there were um. More smaller units and we um increased the size of the units.
Yeah. Cause that's what the Y was traditionally known as, as a place where people can get a room.
Right, yeah, right. They were, they had, um, they had their own bathroom, but they had a shared kitchen. We gave everybody their own little kitchenette. And we gave them, you know, maybe a hundred and thirty.
Well, thank you for your testimony and uh thanks for your commitment to the city of Springfield. Uh, we have another Home City uh board member.
Yeah, Josiah. I, I would just add, uh, Counselor Kern and the other counselors that are connected via Zoom in addition to what. Our executive director and other colleagues in this work of housing have already, uh, you know, added, there is an inherent uh risk. By putting in place, I believe, uh, this type of ordinance. Because, and Jerry, you can appreciate this, a lot of the work that we do in terms of real estate development is years out and ahead of planning. We're approaching the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. Uh, we are approaching different uh funders across the Commonwealth to get approval for this housing. Now, I can just see us going in. Hypothetically, Counselor Kern, uh, you know, getting all these pre-development costs. And then having to come before at the permanent piece before the council and it being discretion, being discretionary. As Jerry had mentioned, and while that may not be the intent or will of this body or this current council. That will then open the door inherently to any council in years to come where potentially there's the risk. That it could be shut down. And for us as a nimble nonprofit that are committed to the city of Springfield. We hire folks locally here in the city. We work diligently in this community to provide services, resources, whether it's rental. Whether it's homeownership, that would certainly have a detrimental effect. Uh, on home city development. I know several of the other housing partners around the state today. So thank you, Councilor Kern.
Thank you. If you wish to testify, you can or?
Um, yes, please. So my name is Jeffrey. I work with CSO. Um, and on Worthington Street with Friends of the Homeless, um, as you may know, we have ten, a hundred and ten um micro units there. Um, and we have thirty six in development. So they're approximately three hundred and forty square feet. They're clustered onsite so that folks um like Olivia and Tom were describing can get supportive, um, um. Get supportive care, kind of be connected to internal referral, have on campus resources. And that's uh very important, especially for people experiencing mental health um challenges or co-occurring conditions or chronic homelessness. I would um also like to point out that those are um, you know, I could imagine, Counselor, that you might imagine they're. Sort of projects that would be easily passed with a variance. Well, part of our job is not just special projects, but housing anyone that has. Is experiencing homelessness. We had over eleven hundred individuals um access shelter last year. That's a lot of people that need apartments. About capitalism, it's supply and demand, right? If you want the prices to come down, you. Saturate the market with available units. We don't have available units. We have a great shortage of available units. So the idea of uh cutting back. Adding any restriction to what might be built seems counterintuitive. Um. Also, you know, on a personal note, I, after leaving the military, um. Was, you know, struggling with my own demons and rented um a row house and then eventually into a small unit of a three hundred and twenty square feet. Was there six years able to wash dishes, grow up in the restaurant and eventually pay my way through college. That's because it was affordable. If it was a five hundred square foot unit, it would have been maybe a hundred or two hundred dollars more a month and it wouldn't have happened.
Thank you, sir, for your story and thank you for your testimony.
I'm all set. I would just echo you to what my colleagues here had said.
Well, thank you so much for attending. Uh, you, you know, when, when you, you boil down the numbers, we're. Talking from the five hundred square foot minimum to the waiver uh to build lower. We're talking a hundred and twenty five square feet. Essentially. Uh, so it's great to see that much passion uh here. Uh, around the room for so many stakeholders who dedicate their lives to providing quality housing uh for so many Springfield residents. Um, we're, you know, whether it's Home City, uh, MHA, uh.
CSO. CSO.
CSO. And we also have developers, Gordon Pulsifer, uh, you know, Chuck Irving. And certainly we all are aware of how many housing units, uh, Wayfinders. And one thing I'm struck by, by today's meeting is. We have some major developers here. I mean, these are multimillion dollar organizations. But what we don't have here are, you know, uh, a, a lot of um. Members of the tenants associations or people who live in uh housing here in the city of Springfield. We have to rent not from organizations that are uh well run with, that we know as city counselors, you're gonna have. Security cameras, um, uh, uh, everything's gonna be up to code, elevator is gonna work. This is not simply affecting the major uh, uh developers ar- around the table. What it really is gonna bring a spotlight on is the private developers. Who are looking to jump in as real estate entrepreneurs and build something. We hope that those developers that come before the council are gonna build something of the quality of Home City or Wayfinders or MHA. But as a counselor, I can't be assured that. Uh, I would have to respectfully disagree. Uh, respectfully, as you are an expert in the housing, uh, affordability isn't the only problem in Springfield. Quality of the, of housing stock is a major problem. We have Boston developers who are coming in here and I know one in particular because the house is up for sale right now currently in East Springfield. They're taking traditional one bedrooms and they're putting walls in and they turn into two bedrooms. They're marketing it as a two bedroom, but it's not really uh, to these standards, a two bedroom. And that is kind of what this is uh looking at. So we don't have a lot of input from. Individuals uh who are tenants. And with the housing crisis as it is, my fear is the tenants who are in desperate need. Of housing or not fortunate to get in through the Home City waiting app or the Wayfinders. Waiting line or MHA's waiting line and have to go to a private developer could be exploited. And exploited for paying astronomical rents for housing that is not quality. And so basically the idea is if you're gonna go less than five hundred square feet, that's the minimum. If you're gonna charge two thousand dollars for five hundred square feet, but if you wanna go less than that, I'd like to see an expert like Steve DeZetel. And his uh department who are uh very professional go outside. All right, what do you have here? Cause not everybody's gonna have the, the resources and the funding of a Gordon Pulsifer. He's got five thousand units, he's a multimillionaire. And he, he runs a tight ship. He has some of the best housing uh i- i- in the state. We're talking about private developers as well. Uh, so I, I, again, I would say the, the quality of a housing stock. Uh, isn't up to par in Springfield uh for a lot of mom and pops. Uh, developers, number two. Uh, renters could be exploited and uh I think will be exploited currently uh if, if we don't. Produce some standards. And then uh number three, I think if you were to ask any tenant who's paying two thousand, a thousand dollars or fifteen hundred dollars for these apartments. Would you like an extra hundred and twenty five square feet? I think the uh, the answer would be unanimous. Yeah, if that's, if that was available, we don't know. You know, but people are so desperate, those questions aren't gonna be asked. Uh, so as counselors, uh, I think we have to be advocates for the, the tenants as well and the renters as well. And, and we don't have that in the room today. Uh.
I'm sorry, Counselor. Can I, I've been, I've had my hand up for quite a while. So I know we're over on the meeting.
You don't, you don't have to be sorry. Uh, but you, you go ahead, Tracy.
Uh, sorry. I just wanted to comment on the Boston market. They really do rent gouge and price gouge. Like it's way different. My son lives out there. And for a very, very small square foot, um, two bedroom apartment, um, they pay a lot of money. But it's a, it's a really, really different market um in the eastern part of the state than the western part of the state. In addition, I do talk to renters, um, and most of the apartments that they rent from. Um, that they are having the most problems with are not private developers because I do consider. Um that they are having the most problems with are not private developers because I do consider still Home City Development and these others, private developers. But mostly absentee um absentee um developers or absentee landlords that is causing the problem. And I don't think um changing the size or putting restrictions on the size is um our best method to solve that problem. I think. Um looking at rent control, looking at how we um stop the absentee landlords. From coming in and taking up the property because they have all this money because they're from New York and New Jersey and other, Boston even. Um and how do we stop them from coming in, buying up the properties, um doing the bare minimum and then leaving the tenants high and dry? I think that's a different issue than um requiring mandatory minimums on apartments because. I've seen some very, very um lovely small apartments that. Again, I'm just gonna say for a um senior that is single now, maybe lost their spouse or have a very fixed income. Wouldn't mind because they don't want to walk in all that square space or it's hard already for them to get around. So. Um I am looking from the perspective of a tenant. I'm also a developer and I'm also a landlord. So. It's a lot of factors um in here and I think uh we do have the different perspectives in here. Um. Counselor, so I just wanted to comment on those factors, but it's a very, very different market in Boston.
I think you make a great point, uh Counselor Whitfield. And I will just wrap up the meeting with this. Um I don't have the exact date. It might have been. Uh two thousand twenty one to twenty two or twenty two to twenty three. The city of Springfield had the highest rental appreciation in our market than any other. City in the United States of America. It was in the Boston Globe. Uh and so that's on. The renters, that's on the tenants. And and they, it's the renters and the tenants that need the constituency. And the the standard and the. A- a- and more conversations such as this, uh because that amount of increase in rent. Uh that happened, that made us the number one and the number one rental appreciation in the United States of America. As public policymakers, I don't think we really really have tackled that, addressed that.
Right.
To that we have to wrap our hands around that. And somebody has to stand up and fight for uh. The working class individuals who are renting and then make sure they have qualified, dignified and livable space uh to live in. So it was a good conversation. Uh you know, we have pros and cons and and glad to see everybody's out here uh in the first couple of uh. Uh weeks of uh July. Thank you for the input. Uh but we're gonna. Uh wrap up this meeting and we'll, we can continue this debate uh next Monday if it's on the council agenda or further on in the year. Thank you all. This meeting is officially adjourned.